To be fair.
If they were running, they could see them running by the.
Now, I assume.
Advocate eliminating. What are you talking about? Good job, Brad. You always lead by example. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, roll call.
Nelson.
Here.
Orison.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Wunschel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Moriarty.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is the consent agenda. Three A is a motion to approve city council minutes of February 15, 2021. B licenses, outdoor service extension for 513 for Flagfest Sasquatch Centennial Celebration, special event June 11, 2021, and renewal of Class C liquor license. Outdoor service and Sunday sales for Wheeze's, both pending final approval by Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division. C is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds of budgeted transfers for the month ending February 28, 2021. D is a resolution acknowledging receipt of fiscal year 2021-2022 budget of the Spencer Municipal Hospital of the City of Spencer, Iowa. E is a resolution adopting final assessment schedule for nuisance abatement and confirming and levying the assessments for tree trimming. F is a resolution to provide for notice of hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2021 Fourth Street resurfacing project with a hearing date of March 15, 2021 at 6:30 PM with a Iowa Department of Transportation letting date of May 18, 2021. And G is a motion to approve S.H.I.E.L.D. agreement with Northwest Iowa Planning and Development Commission for the fiscal year 2022.
I'll make that motion.
First by Tracy. Second by Bill. Any discussion or question on these items?
So late on the tree, um, abatement or nuisance filing, why, why were we so late on that? I mean, because, I mean, it, I mean, it's January. When did this, Jared, do you want?
Yeah, so it's, I think they typically do it around, so they typically do it around this time. Um, they do trimming in, um, August, November. Um, and then Robin goes out with our tree contractor, finishes that up. And then they just, for those that didn't get, um, trimmed through our tree contractor, um, or they didn't do it themselves, um, or haven't paid yet, then they assess those.
I always generally thought we got it in November, so I, I just didn't think it went clear until March of the.
We do allow the, um, property owners time to pay it here first, and quite a few of them do. These are the ones that chose not to, and then we do it on a schedule. So that puts it back another couple billing periods.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Ron. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, somebody explain the S.H.I.E.L.D. program a little bit better.
S.H.I.E.L.D. program is a cooperative that we work together with Northwest Iowa Planning. There's 12 communities, and we, uh, share a director that goes and does the training and keeps our, uh, uh, well, we, I was just going to mention in our report that we had three trainings just last month. So, um, just does all of our safety training and helps us through the OSHA records and that type of thing. We've been, we've been with them very long, quite a while through Northwest Iowa Planning.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item four is a public hearing for A. Public hearing on proposed City of Spencer maximum property tax levy for fiscal year July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Just a quick housekeeping reminder that maximum is the legal term to set a cap. We can always approve the final levy below what we set tonight. I declare the public hearing open. Have we received any written comments against?
We have none.
Have we received any oral comments against? Would anyone like the podium? Are there any written comments received in favor of?
We have none.
Are there any oral comments in favor of? I see none. I declare the public hearing closed. Item 4A1 is a resolution approving the maximum property tax dollars for budget year July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022.
One or two.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by, was that Tom? Second by Tom. Discussion on this?
Uh, Mayor, the, um, approving the maximum tax levy. And is there another alternative that we can approve that is keeping the max tax levy the same or proposed the same, even if, and I realize we're not, we don't have to raise it or anything, and we're just approving that this would be a max amount, but is there a, um, is there a different proposal that we can say, we want to just keep it the same here at this step?
So, good question, Donovan. So that, to recap, the final recommendation from the Finance Committee that was discussed at the Committee of the Whole, uh, twice, and recommended now up to us, the full council, was to, uh, set the levy rate where we're going to set it tonight, which would fully fund the budget as presented. And then to use the mechanisms that Brian has discussed, uh, previously with some, uh, rates, um, in other, some payments from other funds, certainly he can explain it better than I can, but, as well as, uh, some reserve transfers that we have that will buy the levy rate down to what it currently is, so that the budget is still fully funded. It's just not funded at the levy rate that would be reflective of bringing in no reserves or other monies into the budget. So, Brian, is there a better way to say that at all? Does that make sense? Donovan?
Yeah, I'm just unfortunately not going to be able to be here next week.
That's all right. Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item five, oop, go ahead.
Let's make one.
Brian, go ahead.
Not on what you had said, but I think in the notes, the rate that we publish this week, which will be the 1253, cannot be altered at the next meeting. So that's, that's the rate that will be published as of the tax rate for the, um, actual budget itself. And that hearing notice is your next one, your next item. So with that, um, when we publish that, that will set the rate at 1253. And that's what will, on the 15th, they, your council could still lower it further from 1253, but can't go up from that rate from there. So that's, that's, will be set in this hearing or the notice that we publish this week.
Don, do you want me to read that in the motion or not? Does that need to be read? Okay. Anybody have any questions regarding what Brian said? Okay. Item five, new business. Five A is a motion setting the public hearing for the City of Spencer budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022 for March 15, 2021 at 6:30 PM.
I'll make a motion on that.
First by Ron.
I'll second.
Second by George. Discussion, questions on this? This is a motion, so this will be verbal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item five B is a motion to approve Iowa Department of Natural Resources Cooperative Grant Agreement, Water Recreation Access Cost Share Program for West Leach Park Boat Ramp. The grant award is $112,648. First by Tom.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Jared, maybe you want to, uh, talk a little bit about what this is?
Yeah, so Northwest Iowa Planning and Development helped us, um, write a grant and a, uh, Water Recreation Access Cost Share Grant for, um, the renovation of West Leach Boat Ramp. Um, and so it's a 75% to 35, or 25% uh, cost share match. Um, we worked with Cruz Kate Nelson on, um, developing some designs and cost estimates. We were lucky enough to be awarded. There was only four awarded out of 18, uh, in this cycle. So we got 112,648. Um, and we have until December 2022 to get that boat ramp put in and in place.
What timeframe are we looking at? Um, I know the wet, our water, you know, if it's low, it's easier to put it in and stuff.
Yep, so ideally, we'd like to start construction on that stuff this fall. So we're going to try to make plans, you know, when the rain and precipitation is less in the fall, um, and the river is a little bit lower to try to get in there and, and do some of that work.
Okay, so on that boat access, what is, is that's going to allow just backing up into that, uh, and making it easier for?
Yep, so we'll expand the parking lot a little bit. Um, we're going to redesign the angle of the boat ramp into the water itself. So it's acts a little bit more like a self-cleaning, so all the sediment and stuff can wash off. It's going to be angled down river a little bit. Um, so you'll be able to pull a, a trailer with a boat or canoes on there and then back down, back down the ramp. And then you'll be able to park your trailer there. It's, it'll, we'll make it big enough for that.
Was it, was that in the CIP or you just saw that there was a grant about, that was in our CIP?
Yep, so 38,000 is our 25% match. That's in our CIP for this coming year, starting July 1.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Jared.
Yep.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Ron. Anybody else? Thanks for all your hard work on that. I know, uh, I lost a sandal one time I had to fetch back out of the mud when I got out down there. So it'll be nice when that's improved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item five C is a motion to approve professional services contracts with Cruz Kate and Nelson for the 2021 West Leach Park Boat Ramp Project.
I'll make that motion.
First by Donovan.
I'll second.
Second by Bill. Any discussion?
Question I have, um, is this? The amount it's, thank you. Uh, the amount of, for this, uh, we prove this, is that part of the match? Or we pay that over and above whatever the match is, Jared? Understand my question?
Say that again.
Okay, so our, you just said our cost is 38. Is our cost really 38 plus this approval of?
Yep, so estimated cost is 150,000.
Okay, all right.
Yep, and so this engineering agreement was built into our grant application. So that money will be used from the grant award.
The next question I have is for, uh, Brian. In the audit report, they specifically talked about, uh, engineering services being tracked properly. Are we doing that right this time then?
So we put a set fee on this particular contract.
So it's the variable ones that they're concerned about, not necessarily the fixed?
Well, no, it was some of the, what we were talking about is some of the ones like the seal code and what we were never getting agreements really on. They were, we were doing those under that guise of the, for special projects or something. We weren't having agreements on, so that's what that was addressing. Anytime, so basically, we just needed an agreement like this.
Okay, well, that's what precipitated my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion carries. Item five D is a motion to approve five-year preventative maintenance contract with Shoemaker or Schumacher, I'm not sure which, elevator company for city hall elevator for $180 per month.
Sure.
First by Bill.
Second.
Second by George. Mark or somebody, you want to talk a little bit about the plan, why it's advantageous to move into this contract?
The elevator in the current city hall, uh, went out of ma, uh, out of warranty just a couple of months ago. And there's, uh, tests that need to be performed to be compliant with the state. And believe it or not, we had a couple of little issues off the, out of the gate with, uh, the elevator circuit board and a couple of little things. That doesn't mean that there's issues or there's a huge problem. We're not saying that. But it just showed that we had a little maintenance. And there was two different levels, and, uh, this was the more comprehensive level, uh, that it has servicing and some fluid changing and proper inspections. And we talked about it as staff and felt this was the best route to go.
Thank you, Mark.
More question.
Does the state still inspect those elevators or does this prevent, or this, because we have this maintenance agreement, the state will not come in to look at those?
I believe this covers that. But I'm not 100% on that, the state aspect.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item six is department head reports. We'll begin with the planning department. Amanda?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, the Board of Adjustment met this morning, um, and heard two requests from the same property owner. Um, one was related to setbacks, someone, uh, was related to requirements. It's my understanding there was a, a fire, um, and the Board of Adjustment approved, uh, both of those. Um, the, the department has stayed, uh, pretty busy with, with inspections. It's the time of year where things are, uh, getting busier every day. Um, myself, uh, department staff, and, um, Mark Stover from the Fire Department are meeting on Wednesday to, um, talk through next or potential steps on, um, a rental inspection program that we can bring to the Long-Term Planning Committee. Uh, we began interviewing planning director candidates today. We have another interview tomorrow and potentially a third one later this week. And then lastly, uh, just to let you all know that Robin Larson, um, announced her, uh, plans for retirement today. She's planning to retire on May 1st. Um, so we congratulate her on that and thank her for her many years of service. But we will be, um, reviewing that job description and making plans to post it and fill it here in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Amanda. Any questions? All right, B, library, Mandy?
Sorry, let me get my newsletter pulled up here. Um, we are completely open to the public again. Um, so we welcome you back to the library. We're eager to see your faces besides peeking out of car windows, which we also love to see, and we are retaining the curbside service. So if you, uh, don't want to get out of your car, um, you're perfectly welcome to put in an order for curbside or place holds for curbside. Um, and you can call us at the library to find out how to do that if you've never done that before. Um, we have, coming up in March, we have Zoom Storytimes still, uh, Tuesdays at 10 AM, because we're not doing in-house programming just quite yet. Um, we're hoping, you know, we're watching the, the recommendations, and as soon as we can do in-person programming, we will start doing that. The craft kit, activity kits for the kids, um, is March wins. So we have, um, how to make your own kites, and we have wind chimes and pinwheels and other things that make, everything goes with wind. So those are, be fun, um, for your kids to, to try, and you can call us to reserve your kit. Um, the teen craft kit, um, I don't know if, uh, you know anybody who's into that new game Among Us. Um, but, uh, the teens, it's kind of all the rage, and they're making their own crewmate out of plush. So, um, that's one of the kits for the teens. And then the adults, we have, uh, celebrating Women's History Month. We have, um, chalk pastel poppies, um, like Georgia O'Keeffe, who's a famous artist. And we do have a book list if you want to read more about women's history and, uh, Georgia O'Keeffe. And also, um, celebrate National Sleep Day. Um, and that's, those are available March 15th, and it's a sleeping mask. So, uh, you know, I, I think that Amanda should, should say that everybody should just go home and sleep on March 15th.
Well, that's the next council meeting, so.
I know, right?
As far as the deciders.
Right, uh, no, and it's also the Ides of March, so. Um, and then our All Iowa Reads for 2021 was announced, um, by the Iowa State Library. And it's called Little Faith by Nicholas Butler. So we do have that available at the library if you want to read it. Um, and we do have a Zoom Book Club that will be meeting March 29th at 6:30 to, um, discuss that book. So if you have any questions or we can get that book for you or any of the craft kits, uh, don't hesitate to call us, and, um, we're happy to be opening in and seeing faces in the library. Does, are there any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mandy. Congratulations on opening back up. Fire Department Chief Conian, I believe is gone.
Chief is gone. Mark Stover did send an, uh, an email to everyone with a, with an update on the department.
Police Department Chief Warburton?
Good evening. Uh, the police department responded to 833 calls for service this month and performed 26 arrests. Uh, a meeting was held, uh, this month with, uh, between Century Link and Emergency Management, uh, to discuss, uh, comm center phone upgrades. This is the Viper system. Um, this process is just preliminary, uh, but it's to give a cost estimate, uh, to help with future, future budget discussions. Um, this would be a 911 expense, in case anybody's wondering. The police administration, uh, was trained this month in the county's new carpeL system. This is a, a system, um, for the county attorney's office that allows the police department to upload our cases digitally, uh, to get into a digital form, uh, for the county attorney's office. The idea or the premise behind it is to allow for defense attorneys or discovery motions to happen without the police department actually making copies of discs, videos, or case files. They'll be able to just access that system and download it for themselves. This would be a huge time saver for, uh, the department, um, as well as the county attorney's office. Um, the department also assisted with two vaccination clinics this month. Uh, and we assisted Elder Bridge with traffic control for the food giveaway as part of the USDA Farmers to Families Food Box, uh, program here held, uh, a week ago. Other than that, have any questions?
How's your, that evidence room incident, did it destroy much?
Yeah, so, uh, for those of you that don't know, uh, we had, uh, a water line break here on the 17th of February, um, that caused water to go down into our evidence room, uh, which did significant damages to the walls and ceiling, uh, of that structure. Uh, Surf Pro was, uh, was contacted. They came in and basically were down to, um, just the studs, um, down in there. They had to remove all of that material, insulation and such. Uh, the evidence room had to be relocated, uh, which was an extensive, uh, amount of time being, uh, put in with that. And, and to be honest with you, I couldn't be more proud of our guys. Uh, they, they came in, stayed longer. Um, you know, we probably emptied five to 600 gallons of water out of that evidence room initially, just ourselves. And then, of course, Surf Pro came in and did their, did their work. But hopefully, we're working with insurance companies now, uh, hopefully start here in the next week or two to get, uh, construction back and get our, get our stuff, uh, back up and running. So there wasn't a lot of damage to the items inside. Most of all, the packaging materials protected everything, so we got pretty lucky in that aspect of it. Um, it could have been a lot worse. But, yeah, looking back, that, that water was running inside there for about five hours, uh, because that is a protected spot. Um, and, and so, uh, yeah, it was quite, quite significant, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief. Public Works, Mark?
I've just compiled a, a pretty short report here, since we've been getting the weekly ones, so hopefully those have been helpful. Um, in the month of February, I had eight snow reports, so there was eight events that, that, uh, we had to process and manage. Uh, the Street Division's been working on equipment repairs, kind of back to the safety thing, Donovan, a little bit. We had, uh, two safety trainings last month, uh, confined space and rolling bridge crane. We do have a rolling bridge crane at the Street Division. Um, uh, along with our normal monthly safety meeting, we've gone 294 days without any lost time. Uh, we did have a pre-bid meeting for the wastewater treatment plant letting, uh, which is March 4th. We do have some concerns a little bit about that. The bidding environment appears to be up on those projects, so we'll, uh, hope that ours comes in at budget. Um, Craig, it, it just seems like you had kind of a run last week. Several calls with servants, service line warranty, um, concerns and questions. So it was awfully busy last week with that, or I won't say busy the whole week, but definitely above average for the amount of calls. There was a few maintenance program, or projects at the airport. One of them was the large hangar door with a piece broken, and, uh, Street Division did a great job of getting that upping, up and going in a short time. Um, we also met with Cruz Kate Nelson last week just to review all of the projects that are coming up this, uh, construction season, along with a few that are lingering over to make sure we were all on the same page and scheduled with that. Like to, uh, congratulate Chuck Doon on his last day at the landfill was last Friday, and he's gone into retirement. Uh, he's looking forward to that, and we wish him the best within this new phase of his life. Um, solid waste. We had three people gone last week, and it, it's just, uh, it says a lot about our employees. We're able to shuffle street people around and, and fill in positions and get a pinch hit, uh, operators and, and, uh, made it happen without any event at all there. So, um, other than that, I could go on unless there's any questions.
The, the sewer line, water line maintenance that, that you were talking about with Craig, that, we discontinued that?
We haven't yet. Uh, there's a 90-day, uh, clause, so we will bring that to the council, uh, to make notification to the company.
But anybody that signed up for those, it continues on, right?
All coverage will continue, and they can, can still continue to purchase that, that, uh, product.
I was quite sure of that, but I've had a couple of people ask. I just wanted to make sure I gave them the right answer.
No, I think those are good questions.
Thanks, Mark. F, Park and Recreation, Jared?
Good evening again. Um, so our campground host, uh, applications closed today. We received, um, 11 applicants for that position. So we'll review those and then we'll set up interviews, um, for that position here in the, the coming weeks. Um, we're still searching for seasonal applicants. Um, we need to fill about 20, uh, seasonal positions. Um, I think we have some returning, um, and then with those and other applications, I think we're at 17 or 18 currently, so we're still searching for, for those. Um, we've received several tree calls, um, this time of year. It's, it's not uncommon with the change in temperature, larger swings where trees get, um, frost cracks in them. Frost gets into the middle of the tree and they start to kind of open up and split up. It can look ominous, um, but for the most part, most of them will seal themselves back up. It's just kind of something that happens. And other times, there are ones that they've done it so many years, they finally just split open and, and break open. So we're dealing with, with some of the more serious ones and, and working with our, our tree contractor to, to work through some of those too, so. Um, on the river access, we, we had kind of talked about that. So we'll, we got to do, um, our plan is to do that construction in the fall when the, the rain and precip is less and the river's lower. Um, that'll give us a, plenty of time to work on designs and permittings through the DNR and Iowa Corps to work on, do work along the river. And then, um, there was Iowa Great Lakes Fishing Club and Iowa State held an event out at Stoll's this past, uh, Sunday. Um, there was a really good turnout for ice fishing, uh, youth clinic. They had, uh, 30-plus kids at that event, um, which is up from the last year, which is good to see and, and getting people out ice fishing on Stoll's, so. And then finally, um, working with the No Boundaries Group and a couple dedicated members, uh, of the community on the Rocket Slide Project, um, we put a fundraising kind of campaign together, and we will, uh, you'll be hearing more about that here, um, soon, so be on the lookout for that.
Thank you, Jared. Any questions for Jared?
Thank you.
G, Golf Course, Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, last Friday, Jared and I met with, uh, Brian to go through some new software training that's going to be implemented at the parks and at the golf course, uh, which should make things run a lot smoother in both departments as far as accommodating our guests. So I've been kind of busy trying to log as much information as I can from our golf course, um, pass holders and whatever into. into a spreadsheet to get into that software. Pretty excited about it, looking forward to it. Also going through hiring process right now for the season. I know it doesn't look like golf season when you look outside, but it can happen very fast. I think a couple of years ago, we just had about two feet of snow on the ground and we were thinking it was going to be May, and we got some rain and middle of March, we were golfing already. So getting some of those employees through the hiring process and started now, so they'll be ready to go when the course is ready to open. Lastly, the Golf Board met this evening. One of our main topics was discussing our membership drive. Last year, we planned a membership drive to kick off the golf season, and all it did was kicked off COVID-19 and canceled the drive. So we went to a lot of work last year to plan that and get things ready for it. With the discussion this evening, we've decided that we're going to conduct our membership drive virtual this year instead of taking a chance of it not happening again. The date that we had planned to do the in-person at the clubhouse was April 10th. And we have decided that we're going to encourage individuals to purchase their passes or whatever online on our website through the day of April 10th. And anyone that has already purchased a pass or purchased a pass up until that date, their name will go into the box for a drawing. We'll have some gift certificates to give away for that. And again, we'd like to encourage folks to go ahead and pay online, or they can get in touch with me to pay at the golf course, whatever, just so we can try to get as much of their information into the new software instead of trying to do it all at one time. So that's what we're planning for now. Any questions?
Two years ago, you were blessed with two foot of snow being gone and two inches of rain. That was the good news. The bad news is a few of us Spencer residents got to scoop water out of our basements about the same time.
That's exactly right. And I really remember that day riding down Fourth Avenue Southwest with Mr. White, and the water in the ditch was higher than our eye level inside the vehicle. So that was definitely a scary time in Spencer, and it could have been a lot worse, unfortunately. But hopefully that doesn't happen again. Anyone else?
Yeah, what's the plan where the weather's supposed to be in the 60s this weekend and next week? Are people able to come out?
To golf? No, the golf course will not be open. The snow will all melt, obviously, and things are going to be extremely saturated for quite a while. So once the course has had a little bit of a chance to dry out, once the snow's gone, then we'll definitely be open. Always try to open as soon as we possibly can to accommodate everyone, but we also want to be smart and not do any damage to the golf course as well. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Brian. H, City Attorney's Report, Don.
Thank you, Mayor. February was really a less active and less exciting month, more routine. We had to follow up on our collective bargaining process and our amendment of the bargaining unit requires a lot of procedures through their system. We had some abandoned vehicles with which to deal, as well as a couple of abandoned houses. Some activity at the airport. Magistrate Court is, I think, building up a little again. We had a sewer backup complaint filed with the city that was referred to our liability insurance carrier that we've discussed with Public Works and our engineers. I don't think there was any negligence on the part of the city or any liability. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Don. Seven Engineers Report, Ross.
Good evening, everyone. Quick update on the 2021 Fourth Street Overlay Project. As you probably saw earlier in the agenda, we did get moved into the May letting through the DOT. So final plans and supporting documents were due today, and so that letting will be on May 18th. So that's good news compared to being in the June letting. So other than that, as Mark said, we had a productive meeting last Friday with Public Works to review current projects and fiscal '22 projects. And we look forward to getting bid packages put together and get those projects rolling. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. H, City Managers Report, Amanda.
Thanks, Mayor. The last couple of weeks have obviously been busy working on budget, as almost everyone in this room has spent time doing that. Met with Jared and Brian on the WOW Project. We participated in the EMS workshop last week, Jared and I did, which was riveting. The Chamber launched their 150th event this past week. So if you didn't have a chance to see their press conference, you can find that information on their website and social media. Let's see here. All of our employees have received and are completing Phase 1 of the new evaluation process. As it relates to our goal setting, I know the marketing committee is having a meeting this week to continue their discussions. We sent out today an employee survey related to professional development. And I did spend some time last week working with Mandy on some of the library CIP items. Eggs and Issues was held here at City Hall this past Saturday. And I did want to bring to your attention, Brian and I are working on detailed impact, but there is a piece of legislation in Des Moines right now related to TIF that if it moved forward would not only detrimentally impact the city's future ability for projects, but could impact current projects that we have already put agreements in place. Brian had a conversation with our bonding attorney last week, and then he and I met with Terry Heeman on Friday to just try and learn all of the facets of how this could be impacted. And now we're working on, rather than reaching out to our legislators and saying this is bad, we want to be able to show them specific projects and examples in our community that'll be detrimentally impacted by it. So please be on the lookout for more information from us on that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
What's the goal of the legislation?
To limit cities' abilities to use TIF. It's currently ways and means, right? Is where it's at? Megan Jones sits on that, in case you're inclined to visit with her.
Thank you, Amanda. Any questions for Amanda?
All right. Item 9, Mayor's Report, just a few items. I had some citizens reach out about our snow ordinance for sidewalks, how it's enforced, and they wanted to provide some further feedback. I did mention to them in January, the Public Safety Committee meeting did meet. There wasn't any, Brad might have been there, I don't know. But were you there, Brad? Yeah, so I believe Brad was the only citizen that was there. They expressed an interest to meet again. I visited with Tracy Larson before the meeting here, who chairs that committee. So end of March or early April, it's up to Tracy as the chair. But we're open to reconvene that if people want to give input and discuss the snow ordinance, why it's there. I believe there was a good social discussion. You know, the primary goal of the snow ordinance, which is, I believe, Don mandated by state code, is that correct? The clearing of sidewalks?
For injuries resulting from fear to close the ice and snow. That's true.
Thank you. So we need to make sure as a community that we keep those sidewalks open, especially for people who have disabilities or are in scooters or, you know, can't just trudge through snow. But Tracy can call that meeting, I guess, get with Amanda maybe, and, you know, come up with a time. And at the next council meeting, we can announce that. So there's that. I'll be doing my monthly press conference Thursday afternoon. I'd like to establish a more proactive approach to those. So historically, they've pretty much been informative. We take live Q and A during the press conference, but I would solicit any questions ahead of time. So Thursday afternoon, I believe, 2 o'clock, Karen, is that what time? What's that? 2:30? 2:30 Thursday is when we will go live. It'll be live on Facebook as well as, is it on YouTube as well? Channel 2?
We post to YouTube after.
Post to YouTube after. Okay, be archived on YouTube, so live on Facebook and Channel 2. So what I would like to do is get as many topics ahead of time or questions that the citizens might have ahead of time, and I'll address those during the press conference. And then again, we'll take live questions and answers as well. We've had questions about the mask mandate, the policy that was put in. I get a lot of questions if it's a city ordinance, it's not a city ordinance. It's a county ordinance originated through the public health. So that stipulated that to repeal or for the mask mandate to go away, it had to be 14 consecutive days under the 14-day state positivity rate in Clay County of 5% or lower. We've met, and two Sundays. We've met that threshold. I believe the rate today was 1.7.
1.7.
So we asked the supervisors on behalf of the citizens to ask us, what are the next steps? And I believe they'll be discussing it in the near future. So if you have questions regarding when it goes away or how it's lifted, I would encourage you to contact your five county board of supervisors, and they can walk you through that. But they'll be having that discussion coming forward here, I believe, this week. Rocket Slide, I would echo Jared's comments. I'd like to thank everybody that's been involved in that. We'll have a busy next couple of months, raising some money, having some fun, and looking at the nostalgic renovation of the Rocket Slide. I believe once it gets renovated and put back in the park, it'll be extremely exciting. Mike Harlemann called me. As you all know, Mike and Bob Rose are working on the fundraiser, just wanted to relay their continued solicit funds. The community continues to be responsive, and I believe they're right at or a little over $40,000 in pledges and cash now. So I want to thank them for their continued work and look forward to seeing some improvements out at Stollies on the bike and walk trail. With that, I'd take any questions anybody would have? What's that? Oh, yes. Last item is official business, mentioned last week, but, or last council meeting. We have an opening on the Planning and Zoning Commission, so I would entertain a motion to appoint Elizabeth Bonenkamp to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fulfill the term of Todd Cruz, who expires, that term expires, not Todd. We hope Todd's doing well. I believe he's back up in the cities. Expires June 30th of 2023. First by Tom. Second by Donovan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Elizabeth, for your dedication to serve the community. Item 10, Council Committee Reports.
Mayor, we just have our regular council meeting scheduled for March 15th at 6:30 p.m.
Thank you. Item 11, I would entertain a motion to approve the Bills and Claims. First by Bill. Second by Lauren. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The motion carries. Item 12, other business opportunity to address the council. Would anyone like the floor?
I got one quick. It was brought up to me that electric scooters are a thing in a lot of big cities. And I've been asked if they are allowed to have electric scooters on the bike path and electric hoverboards type thing. They are motorized, but they're electric. I don't know, you rent them all over in big cities. So I guess I was bringing that up because it was addressed to me if we're able to have electric scooters on the bike.
To be clear, when you say electric scooters, you're not necessarily talking to three-wheel like handicap scooters. You're talking the fast two-wheel?
I don't know if they're fast or not. Whatever the city's always rent out, you pay five bucks and...
So you mean the public transportation, well, not the public transportation. You're talking more like in Minneapolis, the green ones that you put up and go.
The green that you just...
Yeah, those. So we had, Mark, I was, Chief can address this. We had, in the mayor thread, we had a discussion about that. Some, we haven't had them here yet, but I've been told when they appear, they just appear. And a lot of times, cities are reactive. There's a couple of companies, I can't remember the names of the companies.
Yeah, they're pro, sorry, they're proactively reaching out to communities to get their scooters in. And I think there's a piece of legislation right now that's dealing with the regulation of them, but I'm not sure it's gone anywhere at the state level.
Currently, there's no motorized vehicles allowed on the bicycle trails. And I'm not, and I'm not sure exactly where that's allowed through the grants that would have been used to acquire those trails, if that is an exception to that rule or not. I don't know.
So what happens, electric bikes are becoming a big deal. So what happens if you get an electric bike on the bike trails?
Well, they can be cited for violation of the park rules.
Really?
Really.
That was what, it was brought up to me, they were looking at. It wasn't approached to me as getting them around town. It was approached as some people wanting to buy these, ride them to work, while the safest route's on the bike trail. So that's where it was brought up to me was, I don't know if those things go, I don't know what they go for speed.
Jason told me the, he had, well, they can go north at 20 miles an hour real easy.
Our son has one that he uses to ride when he rides to work, and it's for up and downhill for him. And he says it will, on flat ground, it will cruise at 20 miles an hour. It's electric, you pedal the bike, you can have either the electric part going or you can pedal it. And he's got a charger at the office, if they were open up again, and a charger at home. And if he rides back and forth at 14 miles, he uses that electric bike. Then it's allowed there, so.
Yeah, this is something that's been brought up to other park board members as well, and that we'll be discussing that at our next meeting. Yeah, there are some concerns with how fast some of those can get.
He says 20 miles an hour.
Yeah, so, and there's some that can go 45 miles now. So, I mean, it's, there's a lot of things to consider when we do that. But, you know, talking with Jason at Bork Spides and Shades, they are starting to sell more of those electric bikes for folks. So I think we just have to take our time with that discussion and try to figure out the best way to attack it and provide some restrictions or rules regarding those if we do allow those. Because they do go so fast, I don't want to have any issues there. But yeah, currently through some of the grants, that's, electric bikes aren't outlined in those. It's, they're considered motor vehicles and those aren't allowed. So that's kind of how it is currently.
Last summer, I was going home from a council meeting, and there was a kid going down West Fourth Street out here, and he was doing a good 20 mile an hour on a skateboard. A motorized skateboard. I don't know how you drive those things and prevent from running over somebody, but he was flying. So they're around, but I think they're dangerous tools to have out on the path, cart paths or the trails.
Rather have them on a bike path than on the street.
True, but they're going to...
And bicycles, I mean, a lot of the avid bike riders can do 20-plus mile an hour with a bike real easily.
But they've got a way to stop them. You're doing a skateboard.
Well, these have brakes.
Most of your bike riders are going to be, if they're going to be on the trail, you're not going to see a whole lot of people doing full-out sprint. But you're right, I mean, they can certainly get going, but they're not going to be doing a full-out sprint like they are going to be doing a 30-mile ride or...
You get them past, on the north, I mean, they're going to be doing, the ones that are going to ride that on the north end of the bike trail are going to be hauling.
It's easy to go 20 mile an hour on that one.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
So to recap, Jared, you're discussing at the next park board meeting, or it's on the agenda anyway in the future?
There's the, these carts that people, handicap people ride in, they're using the carts through the trails now. Is there anything about that? I mean, if you allow one, you're going to have to allow more, I would think, or something, you know.
That's a mobility issue, though, that's not...
I think ADA requirement makes you have to use them. I'm not positive, but I'm sure.
They do? It is required?
Which is fine.
Yeah.
The way it should be.
All right. Anyone else? Did you get the question answered?
They don't go up that fast.
Sure. Just wanted to bring it up. Anyone else want the mic? I see no one. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Make that motion. First by Donovan. Second by Tom, I believe, down there. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Have a great evening.